Oh Chief, how you doing buddy?
Hey buddy.
Good. Hey, I'm here.
You need to get up and recuse yourself, I'll get up with you.
Oh no, hey, I'm.
You sure?
Yeah. Oh yeah, cuz I was gonna try maybe it was after this night, but.
No, well, don't be a hero. So I guess I need to.
Merely I can't handle this.
Ready everybody, are we ready? Good? Time being six thirty, call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, whose liberty and justice for all.
Public participation. If you'd like to speak to the council, please fill out a form and hand it to Shannon. Please indicate on the form if you wish to speak during the discussion on a specific agenda item. Remember, council members are not allowed to answer questions during the public participation. Please state your name and address for the record. We don't have anybody, Shannon?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Appointed representative liaison reports, opportunity Dell, no. Think we have a video?
We have a video, yes. Making sure we've got volume.
Central task in the completion of Lakefront Hall was the construction of a new State Highway thirty-four bridge, which spans Lakefront Hall. This project was completed and placed in service in July. And the other roadways improvements and bridges were completed this fall. We made significant progress on Leon and Dan's pad here. We're approximately forty percent complete with that element of the project. We'll begin work on the spillway and the outlet tower as well as the emergency spillway. And we're progressing very well with over a million cubic yards of fill material and plants on this site.
Well, part of construction on this dam in twenty twenty-one, we've done construction for about two and a half years. They were projecting then it will go on for another two and a half years before it would be ready to start building. And we have cleared the areas from State Highway thirty-four feet. And then, and by a year and a half, we start clearing on the area from State Highway thirty-four to the west. And then they're very empty fortunately, we'll be leaving the dam. So right now, they're constructing the, the central spillway structure. And if you're replacing RCC, which is the roller compact concrete, it's the material they make that out of. It is a very dense, very dry mix of concrete. They plate it, set it up very quickly, it's rolled in with a compactor, and then they can place it on top of it. To draw more out of that link, we actually raid cases, and this is this structure here, this out structure has multiple gates. So we able to raid eight gates that will give us the best form we want. It goes in that tower, through these two pipes behind me, into the valve hall, or then goes into a pipe that goes over to the roller pump station.
Just this past summer, we initiated construction on the pump station. That will be part of our conveyor system. And this foundation and the initial piping from the dam and through the dam to this site has been completed. And we're looking forward to having all the pump station and conveyor system completed within two years.
We've also started construction on the pipeline that moves water from Lakefront Hall to treatment. Workers have finished fourteen of the twenty-two tunnels needed for the pipeline. And they've buried seven and a half miles of pipe. Which represents twenty-five percent of the total thirty-two miles of all piping.
Thank you, showing that. Uh, Denton County Emergency Services Chief Vaughn is not here yet, so we'll wait till he gets here. Then we'll call him up here to give his statistics. Uh, Police Department, February two thousand twenty-four statistics, Chief Riggs.
Mayor Council, good evening. Our stats for this past month were, we had a hundred fifteen calls for service. Those calls break down, the majority of our calls seem to be assisting either the Police Department or EMS. We had twenty-seven this past month. We did have a few assaults, um, couple of disturbances at Kroger. And a couple of other domestic disturbances, we had Red Bud. And the call that you see with the person with a gun, that actually was, uh, we assisted Deputy Sheriff's over at Lantana. They had a disturbance there, um, and apparently the guy got away, but we didn't have to get involved in it. I think they caught him later on down the road. Uh, let's see, what else do we have? On the, we're gonna be having the DEA take back Saturday, April twenty-seventh. And also, we're still waiting on the car. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. No, we're topical. It's, that's, that's very common, I mean. Yeah, it, it's common with all the police departments, you order them in October, if you're lucky, you get them March, April. Get them out, you know, from outfitting, you might get them by June, July. Yep. It's going, yes sir, yep. We actually had it back in, they had one of the field injectors that they fixed, we had to go, they replaced it. But it's running and hopefully it'll keep running. Okay, thanks.
And they've had the warranty and everything with it as a factory piece of equipment.
Preman, they take it all off.
Right.
So hopefully, we'll keep it running.
Thank you.
You bet.
It's chief.
Thank you. Town Administrator, um, February two thousand twenty-four report, Thad.
Go to page twenty-one and actually page twenty-two in your packets, uh, we'll go over the financials, we're five months into the fiscal year. Um, that represents forty, just over forty-one percent of the budget year accounted for in these financials. And so if you look at your revenues, um, we'd like to see less than fifty-eight percent remaining to be collected. So property taxes, um, we're right on target, we're actually doing a little bit better than we were last year. Uh, we're at, if you look at prop, our property tax piece is actually broken down into property tax, delinquent taxes, um, and there's one other ones, I think it's fines and forfeitures. We're actually point seven two percent away on our property tax collection. So the delinquents and stuff will come in later and will probably exceed our revenue projection there. Uh, sales taxes, uh, are very healthy, uh, again, we're starting to see these new businesses come online and we're continuing to see that, uh, the revenue push up. Uh, franchise fees also, um, you see all the right away work that goes on around this area and we've had some, uh, in our town as well. You start to see those franchise fees increase, so that is a healthy, uh, number as well. Uh, transfers are, are doing well and nothing in development fee still, again. When we see Knights Crest come in, we'll see something come in there, but that will mostly be associated with the costs associated with, um, sorry, I'm using associated, I feel very associative tonight. That will, that will, that money will end up going to the engineering firm for review and inspection. So again, that's why we pull that out from our normal permit fees. Uh, permit fees, the houses that are being built are big and the permit fees are uh, related to that size of the house and the value of the house, so those continue to be very healthy as well. And municipal court, again, our guys are writing citations to change people's behavior, um, and get them to slow down and stop at stop signs and it's working. It's also generating some revenue, it's not a big source for us, that's not what we look for, we're looking for that change of behavior. Um, but it does translate into we're, we're on budget for the municipal court. Any questions?
Sales tax.
Yes, sir.
Has kind of something to do with that, the Water Burger, when is the estimated completion date for that?
I've got an email out, I don't have an answer yet.
Okay.
Uh, they just changed, uh, apparently their corporate contact at Water Burger, I was just getting that for special events. And it's getting close now, I would say probably by the end of April, but that's just a guess right now.
Well.
Any other questions on revenues? Uh, if you look at the next page, that's our rolling average. Um, I went back and Shannon did a fantastic job, she didn't know where to find this one on her emails report last month, so I have updated and again, you'll see the trend is up as it has been, I expect in the next quarter, we'll see that dip like we do for the quarterly payers, you know, they'll, we'll start to see a lag and then we'll bounce again. Do you have any questions there? We're not, we're not going gangbusters, but we're going the right direction. Uh, if you go to the next page, that's all, all general fund expenditures. Again, we'd like to see fifty-eight percent or more remaining in those funds to be, uh, you know, for the remainder of the fiscal year that we still have to go. Um, we're tracking on most of those except for municipal court. Um, our prosecutor cost us more this year, our court loads have been incredibly heavy. Um, so again, there's a, uh, Caprice, uh, costs us a little more, it's again, not a big number, but that's the why, reason that one's tracking a little fast. We made it a budget amendment later in the year. Any questions? Y'all don't go easy on me, I'm back. But I'm also back, so y'all try, I'm, I'm back in the financials and so I feel good about where we're going. Um, if you look at the next page, it's administration. And once again, we want to see fifty-eight percent or better, um, we're tracking real close in salary and benefits, um, most other categories are tracking well. Uh, we have not spent anything in capital improvements yet this year, we, Mayor and I have talked about a, a few things that we'd like to see, you know, around Town Hall, but we haven't done anything and brought that to you yet. Tell me any questions on that one? Uh, Police Department, um, again, this one, we'd like to see fifty-eight percent more, more maintenance for obvious reasons. The budget amendment hasn't been factored in cuz this is last month's financials. So in maintenance, we're dealing with those issues on the engine and those, uh, other expenditures for keeping the vehicles running. Wood has done a great job in the maintenance, but we started too late apparently on trying to keep some of these vehicles, uh, up to speed with their, uh, ongoing maintenance, uh, schedules, so we, we actually hit a rough spot, we got, we got down to one car uh, at one time, so we're back, uh, no, I don't think we're down to one now, we got three. But we were, I was hoping to get that other car before we started having problems, especially with the new engine. Um, Chief is managing that, uh, the department's doing a great job, but I told him I don't want him out there in the parking lot running radar, we need vehicles. So we're, we're doing what was, is necessary to keep those going.
Other category real quick, Thad, tell me again what that is. On, on, under police.
See what's in there? Can't remember.
No, we already passed you Dell, but we, we did your video, it was very good.
Forty-five.
Yeah, it was good.
Pretty well told the story. If you look at the brochure, it's also, uh, in the back page, that's where we're at. We're trying to get you all the water we can get you.
Thank you.
Our lot money.
Perfect progress.
Sorry about it, you wouldn't believe why I'm late.
I've been using memberships, traveling, training.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Y'all have any other questions on that?
I think so. No, no other question? Thank you, appreciate it.
Y'all have any questions on any of the other reports under this category, are y'all comfortable with permits, board attendance, y'all are good there? All right.
Any other question?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Consent agenda, this agenda consists of non-controversial or housekeeping items required by law. Items may be approved with a single motion, items may be removed from the consent agenda by any council member by making such requests prior to a motion and vote on consent agenda. Number one, consider approval of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four special meeting minutes. You have a motion?
Consent agenda as listed.
All those in favor? Motion carries four zero, thank you, Council. Public hearings and regular items, number one, applicant requesting a conditional use permit for a hundred and thirty-foot tall monopole telecommunications. Tower has requested that this item be postponed to a date to be determined. When the application is resubmitted, new notices will be published and mailed to the property owners within two hundred feet of the affected property. Town file CUP two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh five and SP two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh two. Number, okay, due to the proximity of the property to the subject, subject property in the next agenda item, Councilmember Sam's and I will be recusing ourselves. For the duration of the agenda, Mayor Pro Tim Chapman will lead the discussion.
But, all right. Item number two, discuss and consider a, the final plat for an eighty-one point seven eight nine acre tract of land situated in the AM Felte survey abstract number one five nine four. And the Daniel Cook survey abstract number two three zero in the town of Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. Tract of land is located on the north side of East Jeter Road, approximately two thousand sixty-three feet north of its intersection with the Porter Road in Bartonville, Texas. The applicant is Nikowski Associates Inc., on behalf of Rob Knight, Town of Bartonville, FP two zero two four dash zero zero two. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval with conditions by vote of five to zero at its March sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Staff presentation, Thad.
Pro Tim. Uh, again, this is one y'all have seen before, this is for the, uh, basically family complex, you're looking at eighty-one point seven, uh, eight, nine acres to be broken into four lots. So again, they still meet that ag exemption or that, pardon me, egg zoning. Um, background, final plat has established four residential lots and a private street. Uh, the lots range from eleven, uh, point one eight acres to thirty-eight, uh, and a half acres approximately. A public water and onsite sewer, uh, service for all four parcels, so again, they will be septic as is, as are all residential properties within Bartonville.
That is, does that each residence can have its own septic?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they, they're not allowed to have a combined facility, each, so we will have four different septic systems.
So I misheard you then, when I first heard that, I thought, it sounded like it was gonna be one service and all four, but.
No, thank you for asking the question to make sure that no one else had that same, if I, I stated in an odd way.
Right, good.
Um, there was a single original, uh, tract. Uh, this is at the north side of Jeter, as you come around that curve, it's right there in the corner. That barn is actually no longer sitting there in that picture, they have removed that. Um, it's about two thousand sixty feet north of the intersection with Porter Road. Um, criteria evaluation, so council, you know, P and Z in the recommendation, council for their, a consideration of approval, you look at several criteria. Um, does it conform with the approved preliminary plat? Um, this does conform with the preliminary, preliminary plat previously approved by council and, uh, recommended for approval by planning and zoning. Um, five of the eight preliminary, uh, conditions of approval were met with the final plat. Remaining conditions are tied to the plat, uh, recordation. Uh, construction plan submitted, uh, for review by, or approval by the town engineer, construction plans are currently under review. Um, conditions of approval related to infrastructure construction, uh, are also, uh, in this recommendation. Plat conforms to applicable zoning and other regulations, current zoning is ag. Uh, meets the ten acre minimum lot size for ag zoning. Um, condition of approval for relocations, removal of buildings that violate setbacks, and again, that work is ongoing, it may be completed, but um, but they are working to make sure that is done. Uh, onsite sewage facilities, uh, condition of approval for septic location approval prior to recordation, we have three of the four. So again, this clarifies, we have three of the four in-house, we're waiting on the fourth before Annalisa begins review cuz she looks at the entire site. Um, the recommendation from planning and zoning was approved with conditions. Um, conditions of approval prior to recordation of the final plat, these ones depicted on the preliminary plat shall be recorded. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Chapman's actually signed those tonight, so that, those will be done. Um, prior to recordation of the final plat, any existing buildings located with regulatory setbacks should be removed or relocated. Again, with this plat, before it's recorded, there, we will verify that there are no, uh, non-conformities being created by the lot lines or anything else, all those must be removed. Uh, prior to recordation of the final plat, proposed location design of the onsite septic facilities for each proposed lot shall be approved by the town of Bartonville. Okay, just making sure I didn't double up there, uh, and then according to number four accordance would be, uh, Bartonville Development Order, section two point six point five. Final plat shall not be recorded until either all required public improvements have been constructed and accepted by town or the town has received an appropriate surety from the applicant guaranteeing construction of the required public improvements. That's really us monitoring that they've finished everything with cross timbers because we have no a town-owned public improvements that are gonna be associated with this, and I think y'all have almost finished with the cross timbers. Jacob's here, uh, for the applicant, if y'all have any questions. And that staff presentation, again, recommend approval, uh, from planning and zoning. We'll answer questions or if you have something for the applicant.
Thank you, Thad. Council discussion?
I don't really have that much, I mean, it more than doubles what the land use plan provides for as far as the lot size. Um, as long as they're meeting all those conditions to get their final plat done, I mean, I don't really have an issue with anything.
I think it's great that it's gonna remain ag, I mean, that, that's what we want, is ten acre lots and then the one really big one, that's I, I, I can't see where we can have any complaints with if they meet these conditions and you said as, as we're going along, they are.
They, they have been.
Building, the, the barn's been removed and they're in the process of doing the rest.
And we won't, again, we would not record the plat until all of those conditions are met, so we'll make sure that those are all done.
I watched the P and Z do on YouTube, so I've already put the speed on it, so.
I make a motion that, uh, we approve, uh, item number two as stated, uh, on recommendation of the P and Z commission and I move that we approve.
A second.
I'm Gary's three zero. Thank you, Council.
Much job, Mayor.
Hey. We're getting there. At this rate, I'll have it all figured out.
I know, there you go.
It's really Shannon's notes, makes it easy.
Yeah.
Guys.
It helps block.
Number three, discuss and consider approval of an ordinance amending attachment A of section ten and title rate adjustment of the exclusive franchise agreement for solid waste collection, authorizing a five point three CPI increase for solid waste and one point eight one percent increase on the disposal of recycling processing on residential, commercial and roll-off services, uh, and providing an effective date. Shannon?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item that has come before you, um, yearly, annually, but regarding our, um, contract with Waste Connections as our provider or, um, trash and refuse collection. We have Jeff Collins from Waste Connections here to present this increase and address any questions that you may have.
Activated, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, City Council. Uh, my name is Jeff Collins, I'm the site manager for Waste Connections, uh, my uh, home, my district is in Justin, uh, I am, I oversee the operations here in Bartonville. I am here to talk about the, uh, the seat, well, the, uh, disposal, uh, price increase that we're, um, asking for uh, for this year, uh, the CPI is um, the consumer, you, you guys know what that is, this is consumer, um, price index, um, which is five point three, we're asking for an additional one point eight one for disposal. That's not one point eight one for residents. One point eight one for commercial and so on and so forth, it's actually broken down on that, um, file that you received. So, um, it's gonna be point seven, uh, percent increase, uh, for the disposal, uh, PI, uh, for uh, residential, so breaking that down for the CPI itself is seventy-one cents. Um, and then an additional ten cents for the, uh, disposal.
So a total of eighty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Last year, they have the right to increase the rates both on the disposal and the fee, and it's within the CPI, right, Thad?
Yes.
It's, it's within that limited, they're not asking for more than that, so I think it meets all the criteria of the contract.
Any other questions? I'm it. Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending attachment A of section ten entitled rate adjustment of the exclusive franchise agreement for solid waste collection, authorizing a five point three CPI increase for solid waste and a one point eight one percent increase of, on the disposal and recycling processing for residential, commercial and roll-off services and providing an effective date.
A second.
All those in favor? Motion carries four zero, thank you, Kent. Number four, discuss and consider approval of an ordinance amending the Town of Bartonville Code of Ordinances, chapter twelve, Traffic and Vehicles, Article twelve point oh two. Traffic control devices and providing an effective date. Staff presentation, Thad?
Mayor Council, um, we are not adding these, these locations, uh, they, they are already there. Um, as part of the new subdivisions, trifecta Hudson Hills, uh, Eagle Ridge and, um, Deer Hollow. All of forty-four through fifty-three, those stop signs are there, we just don't have it in our ordinance, so it'd be hard to enforce if we wrote citations. All of forty-four through fifty-three, those stop signs are there. We just don't have it in our ordinance. So it'd be hard to enforce if we wrote citations for running those stop signs. So we needed to update with all of those locations. Forty-one is actually a three-way stop right now. If you've gone into Hat Creek. It it wasn't a big deal when that dead ended uh at where Deer Hollow now is. It's kind of odd to have a three-way stop there. Uh, we think it needs to be a four-way stop. So that would be the only new stop sign uh that we would purchase in as associated with this ordinance amendment. If y'all approve that tonight. But again, uh, this does need to be added because these stop signs are sitting there right now as we as we speak. So we're just questions.
Go ahead. Any questions? We're just adding one stop sign there in Deer Hollow where Deer Hollow is and then updating our ordinance to include all the new.
To enable enforcement, right? Otherwise, you're just just a red sign.
Part of the development plans and they didn't get installed uh as approved uh with the construction plan. So they're they're there.
I'm sure our police department would appreciate it.
Any other discussion or questions? Do you have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance amending the town of Bartonville Code of Ordinances, chapter twelve, traffic and vehicles, article twelve dot zero two, traffic control devices, providing the effective date of trying to provide one.
Effective date.
Effective today.
All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, council. Number five, discuss discuss and consider approval of ordinance amending the crime control and prevention district budget for fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-three and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four and providing an effective date. Staff presentation, Chief Riggs?
Mayor Council, first of all, I'd like to uh just make a little brief statement because we weren't, we had technical difficulty last time. How much I am appreciative of getting this position. You guys have opened arms, met with a lot of nice people. The volunteer banquet or dinner was perfect timing. So thank you. It's an honor to be here to get to serve this unique, nice little community. Tonight, uh, we had, uh, we met with the CCPD back on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth. And what we discussed with the maintenance, we had to increase, excuse me, sixteen thousand for the engine uh for nine nine six. We also uh the life expectancy of our computers uh did a really good job. However, we asked for four additional computers, tough books with the uh docking stations. And the board unanimously uh approved those items for thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, can answer any more questions if there's anything you'd like to ask me?
And the the computers due to the age, they were having issues with GIS um and making sure they could locate where officers were and that can be a safety concern. So that was one of the triggering points. Not only were they well well beyond their useful life, as soon as it comes into a safety issue, that's when you'll start to see us taking mid-year action.
So we didn't, we didn't know that they would, that they were that old.
Go ahead and uh amend the budget and get those.
Yes.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the crime control and prevention district budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-three and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four and providing an effective date.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, council. Thank you, chief. And Chief Vaughn, you're up. We don't like for you to sit very long. I tried to catch you before you sat down, but I didn't quite make it.
Um, thank you, mayor, council. Thank you for having me. Uh, just give you, I'll be brief. Just want to kind of give you update on the things we're working on. As far as our calls, we're had a very busy last couple of months, probably the two busiest months we've ever had. Uh, we did have a lot of hell damage uh to the east, the eastern portions of our district, you can imagine. Uh, we just got through putting a new two hundred plus thousand dollar metal roof on fire station three and it's obviously just totaled. So we're dealing with that, but uh hopefully everybody, everybody was safe. We didn't make a bunch of calls, but no one seriously injured because there was some serious hail damage, as you can imagine. Um, but we had a busy month. Um, just kind of give you an update on some of the things going on with E S D one and two. It's a very exciting time, the things that we're working on. We have a board of commissioners meeting this Thursday where they're going to be working. They have a workshop where they're going to be developing the budget. So the methodology of what the structure of that budget will look like in terms of allocations. What does E S D one pay for versus what E S D two pays for? So it's a critical time in our I guess in our organization where we're going to be deciding that. So the board of commissioners will be deciding that, how that structure looks like. Where somebody worked with attorneys uh to kind of navigate that. But that's some exciting times and from there we'll go through the process, like just like most towns and cities do where we have a budget, next couple of months we'll be filling in the blanks. We'll go in each one of those line items and then we'll be looking to set the rate come August, prove the budget by September and just go through that that routine. So that's kind of where we are with that. But we have a couple of other kind of exciting things that are happening. We do have upcoming our very first advisory stakeholder meeting, I think mayor and Thad will be there, I think chief will be there. And so there's going to be our opportunity to kind of talk to all our community leaders about, you know, a little bit more detail than just sitting up here for five minutes, giving you kind of a brief summary of what's going on. And I do go to a lot of, since we do cover a large area, I do go to a lot of council meetings. And so I do give a little snippets of what's going on, but this is more of an opportunity to kind of get into some of the more details and ask questions and to kind of allow me, instead of me going everywhere, to bring everybody in. It's one centralized place we can talk. So so that's exciting. We got going on. Just kind of also give you some uh some uh new breaking news is last month. Um, board meeting, they board did direct me to put a uh a temporary fire station in service come January of two thousand twenty-five, which will include a fire engine. That station will be in the southern uh North Lake area in the Dale Earnhardt I thirty-five uh area corridor kind of. And so we're also looking to put an ambulance in service. I was directed to put an ambulance in service come January and that'll be at fire station five thirteen right there off Copper Canyon Road. So those are things we're doing. In fact, I have on the board agenda for Thursday, I'm purchasing three ambulances. Uh, two of which will take two years to build. One's kind of on a fast track so we can have for that third ambulance to put in service as a station. So a lot of exciting things, a lot of capital needs and things we're looking at, looking at personnel needs as well. So a lot of good things are happening. And just on a final note, I just want to kind of pass on as far as the um Argyle Fire District, uh you know, the former organization. We did close a very, that chapter's been closed. Two weeks ago, we made the very final payments to all the firefighters. So as of uh this past week, all the firefighters, both former and current, it's not just the current employees, but any of the former employees have all been made whole. That that chapter has ended and have a very exciting uh chapter, as you can imagine, since me being here. I'm glad to kind of get that uh behind us and move on to better things. Um, when I look at that, you know, I think it was exciting. Um, and I think of how it could have ended a thousand different ways. I mean, I think about how this could have turned out and but I do also think that the outcome did not happen by accident. It took a lot of teamwork. It took a lot of the communities that each we work with coming together, rolling their sleeves up, helping us get to this. And I couldn't be more proud of not only our members, but the communities we serve because everybody just like any disaster crisis came to our aid, helped us through this infrastructure crisis. And we've gotten through the other side much better for it. So I'm very thankful. I want to say thank you to mayor council for y'all, for all your support. And I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Number six, discuss and consider approval of a resolution canceling the May fourth, two thousand twenty-four general election and accepting the certification of unopposed candidates. Staff presentation, Shannon?
Thank you, mayor. As everyone knows, we have surpassed our deadline to file for place of application and also the write-in clarification dedication. Those deadlines have passed and the three candidates are all unopposed. So we are able to cancel our election and move forward. So tonight you'll be taking action to approve a resolution canceling the election. It'll have an order of election as exhibit B in that resolution that we can post here at the bulletin board and all the polling locations with the help of Denton County, showing that we have canceled our election and considered the candidates elected. And then the next step will be at the May twenty-first council meeting. At that point, you'll receive your certificates of election and you'll take your new oath of office at that time. That cannot be done, even though we're canceling election until after the normal canvassing period will be. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
If you have, if you have any questions, I'm ready to address those.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution canceling the May the fourth, twenty twenty-four general election and to accept the certification of unopposed candidates.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, council. Number seven, discuss and consider an interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County and the town of Bartonville for shared governance, communication, dispatch services system for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five in the amount not to exceed eight thousand thirty-eight and authorize the town administrator and the chief of police to execute the same on behalf of the town. Staff presentation, Chief Riggs? You're busy tonight.
Well, this item, uh, it's it's an interlocal agreement between us and Denton County uh Communication Center. They've been providing this service since we were established back in two thousand and seven. Um, the cost is very reasonable for what they uh provide. Uh, I was fortunate enough, I went to back two weeks ago, went up and visited their communication center, met their supervisor, some of their dispatchers. So we sort of when they hear eight thirty, it's not just, it's just nice to put a face to the voice. So they do an incredible job for us. I'm very impressed with how they perform. Um, so just seeking your approval to continue for the next fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Any questions?
This is already included in our budget. We did last year, right? So it's not an impact to.
No, there's not an impact to this fiscal year. This is going forward. And yes, Chief Riggs, there's no moss.
Yes.
They start the process early with all the different entities that have to be involved in this. So but it is for next fiscal year. We will take this number into that budget.
Yes.
Have a motion? Thank you, chief.
I'll move to approve uh interlocal cooperation agreement between Denton County and the town of Bartonville for shared governance, communications and dispatch services system for fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed eight thousand thirty-eight dollars and authorize the town administrator and the chief of police to execute same on behalf of the town.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, council. Number eight, discuss and consider approval of an interlocal cooperation agreement with the Texas Department of Public Safety to participate in the state's failure to appear program and authorize the town administrator to execute the same on behalf of the town. Staff presentation, Shannon?
Thank you, mayor. We have been participating in this FCA failure to appear program for over ten years. And as things happen with the legislative updates that we just received in the last legislative session, the uh proposed contract in front of you has met some of those changes, including language and restructuring of the original interlocal cooperation agreement to provide clarity regarding the specific responsibilities between each party. And then also included the end agency into the program as mandated by House Bill two ninety-one from the eighty-eighth legislative session. And language to account for future changes in the current statute, either federal or state, ensuring that the ICC remains in compliance with the latest legal requirements until a revised ICC is available. And the payment for this plan for us to be in is actually in the fees collected from the citations. So this, there's no change to the the fiscal budget.
So does everybody know what that failure to appear, y'all? Does everybody know what that basically is? Okay. Okay. Any questions? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Cooperation agreement with the Texas Department of Public Safety to participate in the state's failure to appear program and authorize the town administrator to execute same on behalf of the town.
Second.
All of you in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, county. G, close session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, chapter five five one, the town council will meet and close executive session in accordance with the Texas government code. Number one, section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with town attorney to seek legal advice of its attorney concerning pending or contemplated litigation regarding sanitary sewer nuisance twelve eighty, twelve eighty-seven Givens Road, town of Bartonville, Texas versus Paula Harvey cause number two, three dash one, one, four, two, nine dash four, six, seven. Pending in the four hundred and sixty-seventh district court of Denton County, Texas. Number two, section five five one point oh seven four, personnel matters to deliberate and consider appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee to wit a member of the Board of Crime Control District. Time being seven twelve, we're now convening to close session.
Horrible as all probably work out.
Like I talked about. But you got sometimes you get a year. Yeah, yeah. Seven, you know, more yes. A friend of mine. I'm sorry. So you leave the body in there? Obviously. So the center, um, they're black. Are they, uh, are their cars are? Not the only question. Yeah. All of a sudden. Yeah. Sometimes. Now I think. Everything. Got crazy. I got. I get a bit here. I get a seatbelt. The passenger. You know, the holster and the. Well, friendly on the cell. They can buy that weird. I mean, sure that they're not working. Ten hundred ninety thousand. When you sleep energy gets so, you better be like, oh, yeah.
That gets burning.
Oh, yeah. I look, I didn't think they were turbo. But when they. Didn't turbo. Square bodies. Yeah. Well, I saw one the other day. It was a single can.
Still so bad.
It's rare. Some people are saying a little bit of damage, right? You know, it's crazy. Yeah, same thing. The most weird is, is, you know, the whole riding free now. I mean, they actually, they won't let me from the. Like the timing, we did too. Didn't get that. And they're like. A duck was not there. We're over in Georgia. Well, whatever. The more, the less I drive, I'm seeing the. Yeah, I, you know, I just got it the other day, you know, saying. Again, if I'm one of my. Get out. Get the girl. Yeah. I read a secret. Didn't look too bad. So. You gotta look at that. Even the seatbelt. Yeah. I was thinking. Yeah, no, they're. The back. And this is a little bit of foam. So what we do. Two, three, four, five, six, okay, turn that area out. Well, we would have like the next change. So there was there. Yeah. That's the area. If I get everything out. So I got the scene out. The next one, ready to go. We can a little bit of time. Yeah. Also. What I did. They don't find anything, you know. Pair of some ass. You know, you're making hate this. He getting qualified. Somebody said the other day. Oh, uh. So I'm like. This is called. I go on work and dance. We just liked it something and I said, we already sitting. So all of that, your girlfriend hits me or you back. So she goes out there, she goes in about a hundred. I know you're a real. Yeah, there's dirt in it all. In your butt. Yeah. Um, I think we'll actually. I'm scared I do expect to be playing. And they just, they're still continuing now. Two weeks. Here's Jim. Yeah, we'll get some rest. And we'll get some. I gotta meet her. We do. No, I love it. Just let me know. So you want to call me later or you want to just? So here's the deal and they all know. Oh, your trees, where's that? This is the problem. They said, we don't have any record. We submitted all to the county at the DA and we don't have. Where's the, where, where do you go? So under by that. Here in. Here in. So this is about eight months. And I was standing outside and I noticed a guy. One of my fence line, those side. More. More. Often being. A man driving. So I see this guy standing on that and I was standing there, right? Trimming trees. Didn't think about it. And because he had trees. So the next day I went out and came back home. I noticed why is all my trees about four foot tall cut on that side? That whole side of the fence. We're talking a hundred fifty feet worth of fence. And it's like. So I came up there and I said. So the chief. He was on that ladder. His, his pole saw over my fence line. And he cut every trees that was against that fence line. He left everything after he cut it, not four feet tall. Basically, I had to cut out an area of forty-five. There were about thirteen trees. All from anywhere here to here. Wow. It's that simple. Yeah. So I called a Bobby. Bobby said, Scott, yeah. So he took the report. He goes, holy shit, he cut your tree. And I said, yeah, I ain't cut my trees. So that day we had a suspect. Yeah, well, we. I went, we went out there that day. They were. So what I did, I told Sarah, I said, hey, tomorrow morning, I'll hit out. So about seven fifteen. I drove down there and I saw him getting out of the car. I was like, what? I say, hey, I'm your neighbor. I said, did you cut my trees? Yeah. I said, why? Oh, because the racket is coming. I said, how come you didn't ask me for my permission? Oh, I didn't think I had. I said, so you telling me you think so these trees are there, I'm just gonna cut them and they'll attach it? Is that how it goes? I said, you cut a lot of trees. Oh, come and clean it up. I said, no, I don't want you to touch it. I said, I would just follow the police. I turned around, I said, I filed a baseball report. They ran down here and basically dumped it. Uh, so guys here. And it's like, no, the report's filed. We have to do stuff. So Bobby and Scott goes, hey, go get it. I said, what cost? Do we place? You know, so I measured every trees. Took sample, went down to a tree farm. I said, what did it cost? This guy came in about a hundred thousand. So what happened is we were, I gave them everything. And I say, you know, if you get a hole, then maybe we'll work something out. Something for a small amount, just like that enough to pay them and pay it or, you know. Well, whatever that rest is, but they said, oh, we can't get a hole. We can't get a hole. Yeah. And one day they said, oh, we couldn't get a hole. So we just turned it to the DA. And DA said they accepted. I said, you have any record of that number or? Report number? Oh, we don't have nothing. And I was like. Scott and Bobby. I said, Bobby, really? They go, yeah, we turned it in there. We, I said, no, that is not correct. There, there has to be some type of number. You gotta have some type phone number or contact. So I can contact. I'm not just gonna sit here and wait DA to call me if they ever do. Right. Well, let me check this. See your case number. Yeah, so a while back, uh, before you were in that process of getting kind of, you know, and I sat down with that. He asked me about it. He goes, hey, what did, what ever happened to your trees? I said, why don't you ask your company and find out? If they told him, he go, ah. And then, you know, he went out. Okay, I'll give this to you. What the, where we're at in the process, but I'm sorry they didn't follow that. Yeah, so I don't know. Give them a moment, I guess. Yeah. Give them a moment. I, I mean, I'd be this, I mean, you know, and he, and I'm not, my, where I've seen it happen with other anybody or just it's hanging over there. It worked. Then I can't come into. Some of those trees, my trees were four feet away from the fence line. No, he was on his side. It's getting. He was like on his ladder. On a six, eight foot fence. Nowadays, still a little bit. That's good there? Okay. I don't want. You can, well, let me give us, Scott, or let me look at the caves. Let me find out what we can do, because you know, I will. But I'm. Yeah, that was, was the thing is. Well, like you said, though, come in just some restitution. But he didn't. Well, that's. Give you five, same grand for them. Yeah. Let me go on and move on. So we can hire somebody to come in and just clean because for years they've been cutting my branches and just left all this trash on the side. For years and I just never said much. And then one day when I notice my trees. Yeah, that would be. And, and I felt bad too. At the same time, I was just saying, you know, the building came in. Let's see what you put something. You know, pay a little bit money. Let me hire some. I don't want them to come in. Right, you know? I'd rather hire a licensed company, come in, clean all this. Right. And maybe a little bit money. So I'll put some flowers on it. I fuck you over this. I'm like, why? But you just can't get home. Can't get home. Can't get home. Can't get out. Now we're gonna turn it all into gear. Let me, let me. I just hope that I can get your res- some kind of better resolution to it, but. No, like I said, the DA had it. I need to know who had it. I should have it all. It goes to the DA and then they will assign it to prosecute. I mean, it, it's a whole process. And I gotta have some. Can't just tell you. Call the report. It goes in the can, kicks out a, you know, kicks out a case number. So I know that we have to have case numbers. I know we know that. When we run talk, what happens? We have to report them, but we can pull anything. Those are that can, can assign the. So when they told me that, I was like, all right, somebody's know we're going to go. Let me find out. Let me get a lot of it. So you're not the first one of some things that I've already had. Give it, give me, give me. Give me six. Yeah. Oh. We'll figure that. I don't. You know, well, pretty much all the things. Like you said, I could be like twenty bucks. I always gonna wait a body. No, no, no. I figured let you settle here and then. Yesterday. And I get it, you know, I'm like, hey, I get it, but you know, let me see what I can do. Oh, my God. No, he walked into this and stuff. I sort of walked in the JV. I mean, it was. Yeah, I had a lieutenant that aggravated sexual assault and negligent restraint. Prosecuted, he was an assistant chief in San Antonio. He ends up getting all sponged. Well, I had my first council meeting. The other city, the other chief there, there was just like all upset. He had a a letter talking about the bad. One councilman will walk up to me, change, who is the fire marshal captain down in Houston? He walked up, he goes, ten seats to watch the back chief. I won't bend it. We, we were out with it. And so I'm thinking about it. And so we are leaving a chamber event and my boss says, hey, I heard is a lady there. Well, I thought you just handed me that. The paper that, that, that Mary Lee, Mary Lee gave everybody. Well, it's a freaking a whole document, uh, the I file the DA, the other day, basically, I mean, they indicted. The most original psychology that I knew there, the team, is this true? Because, oh yeah. So the chief, they were together in San Antonio on and on. Anyway, I'm like, this thing doesn't work. And he falls by his hat and age. So I had to deal with that. And then another lieutenant developed. It was not quite like your Lisa. He didn't go to jail for it. Yeah. But here it's. You know, we did it, sort of, it's. But it's definitely. You don't know. You're like. No. Cause what? Little over a year. Yeah.